All right, we're good.
Okay. Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Carver now?
Yes.
Here.
This is Benisi, here. Mr. O'Shea?
Present.
This is Regis Starby, I'm here. Ms. Santana?
This is Scott Hayden?
Here.
This is Williams.
Ms. Scott Hayden, would you please lead us in a flag salute?
Please do. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Cohen, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice into attend meetings of the public body at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the act, the Union Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date time in place thereof published in star ledger, the Union County local sources posted in the administrative building of 2369 Morris Avenue, Union, New Jersey, filed with township clerks and mailed to all persons, if any, who had requested said notice. During the course of the board meeting, the Board of Education offers members of the public to the opportunity to address issues regarding the Union Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals to identify themselves by name and address. The first public comment period is for items on the agenda. The second public comment period can be on any issue. Public comments are limited to three minutes respectfully. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. Board asks all members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Comments regarding students and employees of the board will not be responded to by the board.
Ms. Scott Hayden, would you please read the mission statement?
The mission of the Township of Union Public Schools is to build on the foundations of honesty, excellence, integrity, strong family, and community partnerships. We promote a supportive learning environment where every student is challenged, inspired, empowered, and respected as diverse learners. Through cultivation of students' intellectual curiosity, skills, and knowledge, our students can achieve academically and socially and contribute as responsible and productive citizens of our global community.
Thank you. The board will go into executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters and action may be taken. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
Some motion.
May I have a second? Any discussion? May I have a roll call?
This is Bryn Swartson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi? Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Starby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Okay.
Listen. I'm new at this job.
No, you're not.
At this part, I am.
It's okay. Okay. You want me to turn mine off? Wait, let me turn mine off first and then...
Please, thank you. Testing, testing.
Mine is coming on.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. It's so good to see so many people here tonight. Thank you. Before we get started and open back up for comments for the public, from the public, I would just like to take a moment of silence for Kathleen McDermott, one of our proud professionals who we recently lost. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on the resolutions listed on our board agenda tonight? Come to the mic, please. Approach the mic. It's okay.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you for coming. All right. Now we'll have approval of our minutes from the April 18, 2023 work session, April 18, 2023 executive session, April 25, 2023 regular budget hearing, and April 25, 2023 executive session. Do you have a motion?
Some move.
Second? Discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
This is Bryn Swartson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell? Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Starby? Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Our communications will be reflected on the Personnel and Operations Agenda, and up next, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Taylor?
Well, there are a lot of people here who we're going to honor tonight. Before we do that, I would like to identify a new member of the Board of Education, not a voting member. Ms. McKenzie is going to say a few words about Gia Patel in a second. We, as a Board of Education, now have a student representative, Gia Patel. Wave your hand, Gia, so we all know who you are. Gia will be accompanied by another student who could not be here tonight, the Esophilius, but we expect that she'll be here again in September. The board's student representatives will be attending all of the meetings we have here in the library during the school year, and we'll provide a brief report about things that are happening in our schools and also be available if the board has any questions and wants to get a student's perspective on things. So with that, Ms. McKenzie, would you like to introduce Ms. Patel?
I'll speak loud. Will you hear me today? Yes? A little bit? Okay. I'd like to introduce Gia Patel. She was elected to serve as our alternate student representative on the Township of Union Board of Education. Gia is a seventeen-year-old rising senior at Union High School and is currently an intern at the Elizabeth City Courthouse and the Prosecutor's Office. Since a young age, she has been passionate about pursuing a career in criminal or corporate law. Gia is grateful for the opportunity to serve on the Board of Education alongside her involvement in activities including varsity tenants, the Peer Ambassador Program, and Student Council. Throughout her academic journey, she has strived to make school her top priority, balancing a challenging course load like AP classes and maintaining a 4.4 GPA. Gia is looking forward to contributing her skills and insights through our educational community. Welcome to the board, Gia. So Nisa, she couldn't be here tonight, but she did send a video for us, and I'm going to be here for my opening speech in one year. And also, it would be a pleasure to introduce the Esophilius, our student representative, served on the Township of Union Board of Education. Nisa will be celebrating her birthday this Friday, June 30th. She was born in Haiti in the trial and will speak in English, Haitian Creole, and French, and would like to learn Spanish, Portuguese, and Italian. Nisa is interested in attending West Point or Stanford with hopes of becoming a general in the Army Special Forces. She would eventually like to become a sergeant and work in the hospital. She is determined to do her best with everything that she does. Nisa participates in various sports, JROTC, and clubs, including Union High School Basketball, Union High School Girl Soccer, My School Vote, Key Club, National Sports Honor Society, Youth Community, Peer Ambassadors, and she has seen mental health certified.
Yep. The volume's a little low, so you'll listen intently. Nisa is, as you can see, a member of the Union High School Junior ROTC program, and she's currently with her peers on a base, a military base, in training up in Massachusetts, which is why she couldn't be here. So this is Nisa's thirty-second intro to all of us.
Madam President, may I fill some dead air? While we're doing our audio issues, what I did want to say about this great opportunity that I had to sit on the panel with Madam President and Dr. Taylor, to pick and listen to the slew of Union High School students that applied for this position. And what I want to say is that, at first, it was just one position that we were filling, right? And when we were talking about them, I was just like, how are they working a job at the courthouse and doing sports and doing this and doing that? I know, I can't do all of that. So I was just like, do you think that we can get an alternate and maybe we can have two, swap it out? So we had the opportunity to offer this position to our main one and our alternate. So it's just one of the...I wish I could have offered it to everybody on the panel because they were just so great, articulate, passionate. But I'm so excited to sit here and just watch you guys grow throughout this, and I hope that was enough air to fill in our audio. Thank you.
I'm going to try to play the audio again. I'm going to send the video to the board, and I'll publish it on social media so we can hear it better.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what I'd like to do is have us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance with the pre-K students who recorded a special message. So if you could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. See if I get the audio to work to this one. Put your microphone to the microphone on the computer.
Right hand up, hand on our heart, keep going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon Myers, this pre-K class, and everybody who's stood for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to invite the coaches and law enforcement representatives who are here, who took part in both the Torch Run and Special Olympics in Trenton, to come on up to the front. I'm going to come around, say a few words, and then invite Ms. Santana, our board vice president, to also say a few words before we introduce all of the athletes who are here for us to honor. So if I could have all the coaches come on up, all the coaches and our law enforcement officials. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing. All right. You got me, though? I'll speak louder. So we're here because we have here at Union a very, very, very strong program for all of our athletes, student athletes, who want to be part of their special international activity called Special Olympics. But it started with something called the Torch Run. Want to say a word to, before I introduce some of our law enforcement officials who are here, about the Torch Run. First of all, the Torch Run took place on June 9. It is something that law enforcement officials all around the country started years ago so that they can become known as Guardians of the Plain. So the Guardians of the Plain, three guardians who are here representing our community, carry the flame of hope that shows that Special Olympics is alive and well, and it also kicks off what becomes a full weekend long of special events for parents, for guardians, for all of our student athletes who are here this evening. So with that, I would like to give special shout-outs. So these are folks, by the way, these are police officers who are board administration students know very well, love very much. It's been so good, just a general opportunity for me to say how much we appreciate bringing you and the rest of your colleagues who support you. You've been good to our kids. I hope they've been good to you as you've been to good as you've been to us. I'm sure they have. We have Captain Barry Cohen, who, by the way, is in UHS class. Captain Cohen is a member of the class of UHS class of eighty-five. So, Sergeant Mike Deitchy, who is the class of eighty-six. Don't be offended, I'm sorry. You don't love eighty-six. And by the way, we're also fortunate to have Sergeant Luca Deitchy's other half, his better half, here as a teacher at hand, who's one of our lock guards, even with Hannah. Officer Samantha Barillo, who's a class of twenty-four eleven. You'll also find some of these folks on pipes around town. Don't hesitate to say all of it very quickly. Let's talk a little bit about the coaches. So it's one of the reasons that all of our student athletes are part of, thanks to the mentors that we have up front here, the coaches, take part in Special Olympics every year. And at a minute, I'm going to ask each of the coaches to introduce some of the students, some of the athletes. The club Unify is part of Project Unify, that's an international organization, part of Special Olympics. And not only is it about competition, but it's also about education inclusion of sports. It's a sports-based program, and really, the big emphasis is on respect for sport, respect for each other, no matter who we are and how we are. So with us are lots of athletes, but I'd like to make sure the coaches get a shout-out. We have Coach Lauren Collin here. Coach Baker coached a lot of victims. Coach Stephanie Branco. Coach Henry Cor. And Coach Ken Mata. So with that, if I invite Ms. Santana to come up and say a few words, and then I'd love for the whole board to take some pictures with all of our student athletes who are here. I'd love to pass the mic to the coaches, if you'd like.
Same thing.
Give some of your student athletes a shout-out. Who wants to start?
Dr. Taylor.
Dr. Taylor.
Dr. Taylor.
Can you hear us if we speak?
No. So I am the coordinator on the Special Olympics. I am the unified supervisor and one of the coaches at Union High School of Union High School Sports. So the whole of the unified sports community is changing opportunities for these whole students, who have different kinds of activities, who have different abilities, ability and struggle awareness, and exclusive activities, events throughout the school year.
The Unified Sports are fully inclusive sports and/or fitness programs that combine equal numbers of students with and without disabilities. At the high school level, I aim to create as many opportunities for authentic social inclusion through whole school engagement, unified sports, unified clubs, and unified events. So this year, we had several unified sports teams up at the high school, and we had lots of amazing athletes. So we had unified bowling, an esports team, a recreational track team, a track team that competed in the regional and summer games, which started with the Torch Run. The athletes, last year we started with only three athletes, and this year, the high school had ten compete at regionals and nine compete at the summer games, which is incredible to have so many athletes. So the athletes get to, we start with the Torch Run on a Friday, and then all the athletes get to go to TCNJ and spend the entire weekend at the college and compete all weekend and participate in many different activities. So our athletes are extremely devoted and hardworking. They give a hundred percent during every single practice, every event, and we're very proud of them. This year, our athletes won fourteen gold medals, eleven silver medals, and two bronze medals. Caroline, this year, made history for our Area Five for being the first blind athlete to compete in our area. We are very proud of her. So we hope to continue to grow our sport teams each year and provide as many opportunities as we can for everybody.
Hello, everyone. I'm Maria Fiordolino, better known as Coach Fio. I teach at Burnett Middle School along with Dave Casaneda and Andrea Corb. I want to go back just a little bit. This unified program would not be in existence, and I have to give kudos to Diana Schreier. It all started back in 2013 at Burnett Middle School, to where we just had a few athletes, and each year, she started with a buddy lunch. And then on Mondays, we do a unified after-school program for an hour, and the students come and spend an hour with Dave and Andrea and myself, and we do all kinds of sports, and the socialization with the Gen Ed kids who participate every Monday. They love it. They look forward to it every Monday. So I just want to say, I cannot be prouder than all the athletes. The best thing, I think, that goes along with this program is that we have now Lauren, Coach Baker, Ms. Matra, and even on the elementary level, with Ms. Branick now joining us and bringing in a new force with the elementary kids. So our goal, not only just with the high school, but we want to start from elementary, continue through middle, and we are so grateful now that the high school does as much as they do, that our kids can continue this. So again, thank you to the athletes. We love you. You're the best, and we look forward every year working with you.
Thanks, Fio. Good evening. I'm Dave Casaneda, one of the coaches from Burnett. Back in 2019, Ms. Fio and I started our Special Olympics Track and Field Team with just three athletes, two of which are here tonight, and now are students of Ms. Cohen at the high school, as Wilbur Jones and Arinthia Senior. Let me really quick acknowledge the achievements of Arinthia Senior. In 2019, she took gold in the shop hood in the top female division. Since then, she has defended that title twice. Arinthia, you are a state champion. We love you. We are here for you, and you are the best of the best. Back to what I was saying, that we started with two coaches, three athletes, you know, and it was a dream of mine that it would grow, grow into something to include the high school and other athletes from around the district, but most importantly, that they would compete as farmers. That now, that dream is coming true. I couldn't be more proud of the athletes, and with the help of Ms. Cohen, Ms. Fiordolino, Coach Baker, Mrs. Corb, and now Stephanie Branco, Ms. Mata, that dream is coming true. We are now seven coaches, seventeen athletes, and we already made a goal for next year. We're going to take twenty-four kids to states, minimum.
One of the champions on the board of this program is Ms. Santana, our vice president, and I would love for her to come up and just say a few words. In fact, it was her idea that we bring you all out tonight, and I thank you, Ms. Santana, for that. So Ms. Santana, and then when Ms. Santana's finished with her remarks, I'm going to ask our student athletes to join us for a picture with all the board, including you, Gia. Ms. Santana?
Thank you so much. When you have a mic, why not? I might cry. So if any of you know me, my passion, and I'm sorry to give my back, my passion has always, well, it all started me being an annoying parent, walking into the world of IEPs and 504s. Mrs. Branco and I go very far. We usually call her the baby Branco because as we know, her mom also works here. And what I'm hoping is, with this new breadth of Battle Hill and all our kids, we started with, what was it, three and two or two and three? It just gets bigger and bolder and continuously working with our partners. Thank you. Thank you at the other end, Kat. We have to talk to that. I'm just excited because I have this vision of all of these great children of Union to grow. And I remember we were in a meeting, and I heard about this, and I said, first, why wasn't I there? And secondly, I want all of those kids, and I want all of those coaches, and everybody that had a part in it to come. Please, Dr. Taylor. So what I say... So what I say is, thank you for being the vision of Union to all these wonderful children, teachers, partners, board, my board members. I completely tell you that they support me 100% of the way, and sometimes we don't agree with everything, but this we do. Thank you.
I just want also to recognize, over the years of doing this, our parents. Because without the parents, we would not have the athletes we have today. So parents, a big, big thank you from all of us. And we hope you continue to bring your athletes. I have to tell you, this past year at state games, just the family support we had.
I mean, Union, we represented Union. You have to see our, you have to see our pictures. Our families that came out and supported us, just staff members that came out to support us. We got to hold our Union Farmers banner and just really represent Union for an entire weekend. So Union is known at Special Olympics of New Jersey. If they hear Union, they know all our faces. We are in their magazines, we are in their brochures, we represent for Union.
Thank you. And I know we need to move on, but also to our Union Police Department, because they come out and support our local games each year and provide us with pizza and ice cream truck and all those great things. So thank you, all of you. And they also came and gave medals out this year at the state games, so we do appreciate.
And so with that, what I'd like to do is to ask all the student athletes who are here in the audience to come up in front of your coaches. So come on up, bring your medals with you. And board members, can you please join us for a picture? It would be really nice if we could all get around our athletes and coaches. And parents, come on up if you want to take pictures. Don't be shy, you can come up here in the front. And how, how about everybody give a round thing, standing applause to our student athletes? All right. And then you can take your seats. Thank you so much, everybody. Feel free, if you want to head out, we will not be offended. It's a long night. You're welcome. Ms. Drayton, can you come on up? The next part of my report has us honoring four students from Battle Hill, our students being spotlighted. Ms. Drayton, I'm going to give you the mic, is our interim principal at Battle Hill. So without further ado.
Good evening to everyone, um, to the Board of Education, to our staff that's here, um, parents and students, good evening. We are spotlighting Battle Hill this evening, and, uh, we have a teacher that, um, has a heart and a green thumb as well. She loves the garden, so we have the Battle Hill Garden of Knowledge. And it began before the pandemic, but of course, being out of school and being away, um, it was very overgrown. So this September, our third graders especially, which we have so many of them here this evening, um, they were able to put their hand to the plow and be able to, from beginning to the end, see the overgrown weeds and grass. They learned how to use a weed whacker, they learned how to use a lawnmower. So parents, they are very eager to use those tools. Uh, again, so, I mean, I would let them show you how they have learned how to use them as well. Our third grade teachers, although Ms. Bagda has been very involved, and it's really her heart, all of our third grade teachers, including Ms. Branco, have been involved in this project, and they have been out there tirelessly, they've been caught in the rain, they've done everything they've can to make, put the picnic tables together and just do everything to make a wonderful garden and, uh, plant seeds. The four students that are here this evening are students that have learned such tremendous leadership skills by put, putting, not only putting tables together, but then guarding and also showing and leading other students to do the same in a team. Also, uh, they're being able to hone into their own skills and get involved with taking the initiative. I'll mow this side of the lawn, I'll do the weed whacking here. So our four students have done a tremendous work. Uh, they're excited, they can't wait to get back into it in September, and they can't wait to see what they harvest as well. It will also be used during ESY at, uh, the extended school year as well during the summertime. So when I call your name, if the students can come up, please forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Abigail Ibbitt. Ikana Norum. Lucas Houston. William Prezioso. I want to give them an especial thanks. I want to give them a special thanks for all of the hard work that they've been doing. They've been tremendous. They put all of their energy out there, and I just want to say that not only am I proud of you, but your teachers are proud of you, and your parents are proud of you, and your community is proud of you. So please, continue the work, and you're going to be fourth graders, but continue the work next year, and we'll see how much bigger we can make this. Thank you.
But before you go anywhere, Ms. Drayton is going to give you each a special certificate that we want to give you, the Board of Education and I want to give you, so you can put something on your wall to remember this night. And I'd also love to invite the parents, guardians, anybody who came up, so we could take a picture together. And Board President McKenzie, if you could join us too, that would be wonderful. Come. If you're here to honor these special kids, come on up. Thank you, Ms. Nidas. Why don't you guys come over on this side, so we could all get in the picture together? Come squeeze in a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody, and thank you, Ms. McKenzie. And Ms. Drayton, thank you for coming out. I do have one more group of individuals I'd like to honor before I wrap up my report. We're lucky to have three educators who were honored as Educators of the Year for 2022, 2023. So as soon as we settle the crowd, I'm going to ask each one of them to come up, I have a little, something I'd like to give them. So, um, every year, the district collects nominations for Educators of the Year. This year, we received 69 nominations and selected 10 educators, one from each school. Two were actually counselors, um, which, when we were presented at Kane University, we were all together for special county recognition, was pretty unique, because only a few school districts actually honored counselors as well as teachers. We're fortunate to have three of those individuals with us here tonight. Um, we have a special gift for you, and I would like to say a few words before, um, I ask each of you to come up. So first of all, Cara LeBlond, who's here. Cara was nominated. Oh, come on up, Cara. I was going to say a few words for you, for you before I actually, before I actually called you up. Come on up. So, um, just a couple of, uh, things that came out of the nomination forms that I'd like to share some highlights. By the way, this was a blind review of, uh, the nomination forms, so we, we try our best to, um, make it a blind review, meaning that the people who were on the committee to select these individuals didn't know their names, so that it's as authentic as possible. So Ms. LeBlond spends countless hours preparing developmentally appropriate lessons in the two great grade levels that she services. And it's also to be noted that she uses her lunch break in her prep to meet with students who need extra help. Just an example of how a lot of our teachers, like Ms. LeBlond, are, are spending all of their free time when they can, um, to help our kids. They're very, very dedicated, just like you, Ms. LeBlond. So with that, I'd like to offer you this, it's actually a personalized gift, which you can open up later if you'd like. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And if you could just stay here, that's a, don't go, don't go. The next individual I'd like to honor is from Connecticut Farms, it's Jaclyn Vincent. Uh, Jaclyn, come on up. Congratulations again. Um, a couple of words about Jaclyn. She has, as you can see with her smile, has such a positive attitude and creates a welcoming environment for her students. She's created an environment that allows students to grow in all aspects of the whole child. Ms. Vincent is a early childhood educator, so it takes a lot of patience, a lot of dedication, a lot of energy. So I do appreciate you for that, among other things. This is from us to you. Congratulations. But don't go. And last but not least, from the high school, Shannon McMahan, come on up, Shannon. Congratulations. So Shannon, um, a couple of words about her, she takes time to get to know every individual student with whom she works. She creates fun activities, also smiles a lot. She's a coach too, so she's doing a lot of, a lot of work extracurricular, um, extracurricular to build relationships with their students. She goes above and beyond by getting involved in a lot of school activities, not just, um, uh, softball. I've actually seen you on the field coaching, so I know how passionate you are about that. She connects with the students and gives them the confidence they can succeed at all times. So with that, I want to grant this gift to you as well. Congratulations. And President McKenzie, if you would come up, I'd love to take some pictures. Why don't you guys come to the center here? Thank you. And thanks for all the significant others who came out to support. Also, special thanks to my trusty assistant, Ms. Bernadette Watson, who's here. She was behind the scenes putting a lot of this together, and I really appreciate you. So thank you, Ms. Watson. The last thing I do have to report on, which I do every month, is the latest HIB data. I'm just going to, um, rather than project, I'm just going to read the data out loud. So, um, just a reminder, what I do each month is I present the number of, um, HIB investigations that ended in finding, uh, a positive, uh, case of HIB, and then, um, I also report on those that were not founded. And then I report on the data, the number of cases that were founded at the same time last year. At Battle Hill, there were no cases, um, investigated this period. The period runs from May 16th to June 27th. At Burnett, there were two, uh, cases that were founded, two that were not founded. There were no cases at this time investigated last year. At Connecticut Farms, we had two cases investigated, but both were not founded. Last year, we had no cases investigated at this time, same timeframe. Uh, there were no cases at Franklin this year or last year this time. Hannah Caldwell didn't report any investigations either, uh, at this time period and last year at the same time period. Jefferson, there were no cases this year, um, at this time, and, uh, none last year at this, during this period. At Kwame, uh, there was one case that was founded, one that was not. There were no cases investigated during this time last year. Uh, there were no cases this year or the same time period last year. Livingston, there was one case that was investigated this time period, uh, at Washington, but it was not founded, and there were no cases at the same time period, uh, last year. Again, the time period's May 16th to June 27th. And finally, at the high school, uh, there were four cases that were investigated and founded, four cases that were investigated but not founded. At the same time last year, we had one case, and that was founded. Uh, so that's the end of my long report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Up next, we have the Education and Student Discipline Committee Resolution, Ms. Carbonell.
Good evening. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Education Student Discipline Committee presents the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. E1 through E2 and two walk-ons. E3, motion to affirm HIB case number 13, discuss in executive session. And E4, motion upon the su- the recommendation of the Superintendent to overturn HIB case number 14, discuss in executive session.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea? Mrs. Regis Starby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton? Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Fiscal and Planning, Mr. O'Shea?
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Fiscal and Planning Committee presents the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. F1 through F57 with F33, F37A, F37B, F38, F39, or you voted on, uh, these thirteen board work.
Board member, O'Shea, we can't, your mic isn't on, I don't believe.
You lost your battery. Here.
Was that it? You shut this one? The following motions to be voted on by the Board for the Fiscal and Plan- uh, Planning Committee. F1 through F57 with F53, F- F1 through F57 with F53, F37A, F37B, F38 and F39 already voted on by the board at the September 13th workshop.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Yep.
Yes.
Just some clarification on resolution F34 and F35. Just it seems like it's the same resolution, but one is for this year? Which is three days out?
Yeah, so if you, if I can clarify this, or Ms. Kuhn, you clarify.
Yes. We had students that came late in June, so that's why they're on.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? May I have a roll call?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
The items under Grievance and Negotiations will be voted upon after executive session, so we'll move to Operations, Ms. Santana.
Upon recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools, the Operations Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration: O1, approved security drill and bus evacuation reports. O2, approved healthcare plan etna. O3, approved participation in non-binding cooperative purchase agreements. O4, approved to renew, award, or permit to expire. O5, approved rental fee schedule. O6, approved lunch prices with Pomptonian. O7 was approved already. And O8, request from Township Recreation Department. O9, request from Township of Union Department of Public Safety.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? May I have a roll call?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Next, we have Personnel. Ms. Scott Heaton?
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Personnel Committee presents the following resolution for the board's consideration. I would like to move them in block and table P1C until after executive session. So I am moving in block P1A through P20 with tabling P1C until after executive session.
Can we pause? I just want to verify if there's another resolution that needs to be tabled for after executive session. Just give me one second. Mr. Peddicus is looking it up.
Madam Chair, I recommend that we table P1A admins until after close session.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? May I have a roll call?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
In P5, I abstain from employee 8933. P9 and P10, I abstain, and yes to everything else.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby? Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Next, we have Policy. Mrs. Williams?
On the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board presents the following policies for the board's consideration: Policies 1 through 20, and I'd like to pass them as a block if no one has any questions or...
Is there a second? Is it...
Were you done?
I asked for a second first, and then... No, I asked for a second, but I didn't think Ms. Williams was done. Were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
May I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion? None? Okay, may I have a roll call?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Next, we have Residency. Mrs. Benisi?
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Residency Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's information: R1, report of students voluntarily transferred to District of Residence. And some of them, these three students were allowed to stay until the end of the school year, and then voluntarily will leave for 23, 24 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Next, we have Technology Committee. Ms. Prince Watson?
Before I do that, were board members provided with the backup information that they requested for this?
It's up. Everybody saw what they needed to see? Yes.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Technology Committee presents the following resolution for the board's consideration: T1, approved recycling of equipment.
Second.
Discussion? May I have a roll call?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the bills? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Is there any unfinished business from the board?
So a while back, while discussing safety concerns, I had mentioned the issue with this one-way street by the school and how cars come through even though there is a sign that says "Don't Come Through." Last meeting, I was here. There was a car that completely blocked the traffic. No one could move because he was waiting, or she was, they were waiting for the cars coming around the bend so that they could go into that street. That's a problem. We need to address this. I don't know who we need to talk to, the police department, how do we do this? This is an accident waiting to happen, and it just needs to be resolved. And how do we do this? I think we have a safety committee now, right? Is this part of that? Do we bring it to you guys for this?
Which, can you go over the street name again? Which street are you talking about?
That's it?
Yep, got it.
Yeah. So if you get to the end of North Third, right in front of the high school...
Yeah, I know exactly where you mean now.
Exactly. It's impossible. I mean, it's not...
Dangerous.
It's very dangerous. It's not just one-time thing. It happens on a regular basis. I mean, I was standing there for I don't know how long, waiting for this person to decide to move so that the rest of us could get someplace. Needs to be taken care of.
Just for traffic? Okay, so you'll reach out?
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? New business?
May I?
Yes.
It's actually a good thing. I just think we really, really need to take a moment to congratulate all of our students in this district that are moving up, moving on, and going on to bigger and better things. I mean, our kids are going, if you're a high schooler, you're going into the armed forces to serve your country, or you're going to university, or you are becoming an entrepreneur and getting a job and supporting your family, whatever it is. And I think, you know, if we are going to measure some of the successes by some of the places that our students are going, we have a pretty successful class graduating this year. I mean, they're going to some of the most prestigious institutions in this country, and we are, we need to celebrate our families for this. And I just want to thank our educators in our district for accomplishing so much with our children and getting them through all of this. So just a moment to thank everyone, the village, and the work that is being done.
Any other new business? Yes, Mrs. Regis Darby.
Just a recommendation. I know we have our student representative from the high school. In the past, we allow the students to speak right after the superintendent, so they don't have to wait here very long. So if we can move that back to the beginning, so they don't have to sit here for this entire thing?
That is the plan. Thank you.
Gee, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have comments from the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ms. Velasquez. I have a student in the district. I'm happy to hear that there's a student liaison. I wanted to know, will we have the same thing for middle schoolers and elementary students?
It's not our intention at this time, just the high school.
It should trickle, my recommendation is it should trickle down, because I think that someone like her would be great for the students. A student who has been in the district and who may have experienced what other kids are experiencing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Yes, may I have a motion to resume, to return to executive session? So moved.
Second.
And action may be taken when the board returns to public.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby? Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton? Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
All right, yeah, this mic thing is just okay. We will now resume the business portion of the meeting?
No, no, that was a mistake.
Are we, are we ready?
Yes.
All right. In one second, we will resume the business portion of the meeting. Yes, you do. So we will now resume the business portion of the meeting?
You have to speak a little louder.
Okay, so we're on Grievance and Negotiations. Item G1, upon recommendation of... Hmm? Fiscal? Excuse me. We will go to fiscal first. We have a walk-on resolution that will be read into the record by our RBA, Mrs. Kuhn.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, we have a walk-on resolution of the Township of Union of Education authorizing the approval of settlement agreement for a student matter. It's number F58. Whereas the Township of Union Board of Education is a party to litigation pending the District Court of New Jersey and the Office of Administrative Law, and whereas the board desire to resolve any and all claims in dispute, whether known or unknown, related to the pending litigation, and now, therefore, be it resolved, the board hereby approves the terms of the settlement agreement that are in the hands of the parties, subject to additional review by the party's attorney for legality and form, and further authorize the board president and business administrator to execute such settlement agreements and any and all additional instruments and documentation necessary and implement this agreement. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Discussion?
None.
May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Under Grievance and Negotiations, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Grievance Negotiations Committee presents the following resolution for the board's consideration: G1, approved sidebar agreement, UTEA. And G2, approved settlement agreement and general release. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
None.
May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Now, we have Personnel.
Upon the recommendation of the board, after coming out of executive session, we would like to table P1A Admin Number 31 and refer it back to committee.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
None.
It was just that one?
Number 31.
P1A 31, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
None.
May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby? Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We need to do P1C because we tabled that, because we thought that item fell under P1C, but it was really P1A, so we need to vote on P1C, I'm assuming.
Okay, so I need a motion to return...
Second.
Kill the motion on the floor which was to adjourn the meeting. Yes, who said yes? Who seconded?
Second.
Okay, may I have a roll call?
Uh, hold on.
This is to kill the motion on the floor which was to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, okay. Ms. Prince Watson? Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Back to Personnel.
Yes, and make a motion that we accept P1C, all the items on it, the agenda that's in the hands of the board members. P1C, we're voting on P1C. We tabled that in our original, before we went into executive session, because we thought that item fell under P1C, but it's really under P1A. So P1C is actually fine. So we need to, yes.
Discussion?
So I just, there's nothing in P1C that reflects anything that we just tabled?
No, it's just a transfer. It was a mistake. It was a transfer of a different position. Nothing to do with what we did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby? Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. Are we done with everything on the agenda now?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Second.
Roll call.
This is Prince Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yeah, looks good.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. McKenzie?
Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night.
Good night.